Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Meeting. Today is going to be May 4th. It's 2023, and the first item of the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm going to ask everyone just to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you much for that. As far as the roll call goes, do you want to do a roll call? She was excused.
Under Lou Millard.
Here.
In case anyone didn't hear what I said was June Daly while my microphone was off and she asked excuse. Under Lou, Diane Joyce, he has to be excused. Jim Zigma.
Hi.
He indicated to me he'd be joining remotely if possible away, so right now.
Not available, so um yeah, excuse, put him down as excuse, please.
And we'll know if he arrives noted in the record as to the timing. Um, Brian Rogan.
Here.
John Vili.
Here.
Scott Hamel. Don Daken.
Here.
And Steve Biella Jr.
Okay, who was an alternate? Because we have two seated members that are not with us, I'll ask Mr. Dake, Daken, Daken, thank you. You may have to correct me a couple of times. Okay, I would just call you John to be seated for the meeting. And for those of you who don't know, I was remiss in not introducing you to the group last time around. That's my bad. I think we were caught up with technology and not being able to start the meeting in it. So I I apologize for that.
Thank you very much for the welcome.
There you go. All right, so now you're on board, so you get to pay the price. All right.
Absolutely.
So we have the review and the approval of the minutes for April 20th. Do you want to do, do you want the motion now, or do you want to approve?
I think it's fine to add.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
All right, for PZ Agenda 5 for 2023, please motion, I'll make the motion to add seven dot C dot Commission Business, Discussion and Possible Action on Submission of the Two-Part Application of 1906 Berlin LLC. One, Proposed Zone Text Amendment for New Section 11 dot EE Planned Residential Infill Development Inclusionary Multi-Family Residential Use With a Housing Opportunity or Workforce Housing Component Prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire Alter and Pearson LLC. And two, Site Plan Application Spruce Brook Apartments of Patrick Snow 1906 LLC And 1906 Berlin Turnpike for Demolition of All Existing Structures and Pavement Is Proposed Following by Filling Grading Construction of Multi-Family Structures, Fifty-two Units, Zero Various Underground Utilities and Paved Parking Areas, Both of Which Were Submitted April 27th, 2023.
Okay, and we're going to add that to after Commission Business, which is going to be the end of the regular agenda.
It'll be at um.
Section seven.
C.
That would become seven. Alrighty, so do we have a motion to add that as seven C?
Yes.
Oh, you make the motion? Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Hamel for the discussion on this? Then all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so moved. Alrighty, so we'll go that. Now let's go back to the review of the minutes for the approval on the 20th. And you know, I took a look at the minutes and I only saw one little adjustment, and that was on page number five About Midway, it states that Chairman Billy stated a survey could be done or a public hearing held. However, she wasn't sure what the response would be. I'd like to change that or or and. Um, I wanted to um, because I know that the the mayor was interested in having a public hearing. He wanted to do a survey, and I talked about doing a survey on line, running tandem with Another information, sir, information session that we would have at the town hall, not at the school. So, or a should be changed to an.
I just want to make a quick note, Commissioner Zigmont is now joining.
Oh, Tim, you're online. Okay, good. All right, so you're no longer excused, Tim.
I'm not excused.
All right, but John, you're still on for June, okay?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, we have the motion, do we have a second? Second by John Dyken. Ken, I'm going to get that. Alrighty, for the discussion, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so moved. Okay, Scheduling of Public Hearings, we have a subdivision application of Kokomo Brothers for Five Lot Subdivision at Lot 46 and 46D, Block 142, 170 Wilkes Pond Road and 243 Somerset Road. The suggested date is June 1st, 2023. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogan, Commissioner Rogan, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Millard for the discussion, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so moved. Request for Bond Releases, A, Request of Earl Wickland for Release of the Bond of Phase One Nature's Edge Court Subdivision. All right, what do we have on this? Hold on. Yes, go right ahead. Go right ahead.
I would like to request that both A and B be postponed. The town engineer that usually does the inspections has been out ill and unable to complete the inspection while I was on vacation, so.
Vv, that's fine with me. So do we need a potion, a motion to continue or A and B?
Motion to continue. Yeah, it would be best if you did them separately.
All right. Um, May 18th.
I'll make the motion to continue items A and B until May 18th.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rogan. Do we have a second? Second by John Dyken. Scott Hamel got it, sorry. All right, sorry, Tim, you weren't fast enough. You gotta hit that button. All right, further discussion, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so moved. So now we have the request of Marcus Bacon for a bond reduction at Focus Physical Therapy Phase Two. And is the engineer also out of town?
Yes, we've looked at.
Oh, you looked at it?
I inspected the property.
Wow.
And then Jim Horrible also took a look at it and we Looks good to us.
It looks good. You're all satisfied?
Well, this would be a reduction down to, this includes landscaping. So for maintenance purposes, the landscaping has to be in for a year prior to it being fully released. So it would be the reduction down to 25%.
Do we have a number on that, or do I have a number here?
I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
Oh, that's all right.
I know the number's up.
All right. We'll just take it at the 25%. I don't see it either. Approximately, do you?
I can do. You can probably do it by percentage, right?
Yeah, I don't know. Normally they tell us what they're holding and what's left or whatever, but hang on.
Not here.
It's not here. Can we ask the applicant, though? Oh, sticky note data, okay. Those are all these, don't lose it, though.
So will there, if you don't mind making the motions for us to verify the calculation, It would be a 75% release of 2640, $2,640.
That would be the final amount that's kept on bond?
No, that's the amount that's released.
It's 2,000 what?
640. That would be 75% of 3520 that's being held.
Okay, so.
Those numbers, you know, like I said, I'd like to.
All right, so you're saying 30?
Thirty-five, twenty.
Twenty is what's held right now? Okay, and so we're going down.
So I will make the motion upon staff verification to reduce the bond to $880.
Okay, so we have a motion?
25% of.
Which is 25, which is 25%.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Rogan, do we have a second? Second by who? By Mr. Hamel for further discussion. And all those in favor, aye. Tim?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, so moved. All right, on to Commission Business. All right, congratulations. That was that, boy, you were out of here fast. Thank goodness, all right. Commission Business, Acceptance of a Site Plan Amendment Application of Mark Chamberlain, 18 dash 36 Willowbrook LLC For Offense at Lot 18 dash 36 Willowbrook Drive. But this was withdrawn, and should that have even been before us? It sounds almost like a So this item A was withdrawn, so we don't have to do anything with it. All right, let's move on. Discussion of the 2023 Plan of Conservation and Development Giraffe Document Revisions and Edits. Okay.
Um, we we put this on the agenda, one, because the draft document that got, you know, published, you know, and distributed. But we actually have to, and then it was being edited, if you'll recall.
Yes.
It was brought to the We had the public hearing with Town Council and we encouraged everyone to list their comments so that edits can be made. Staff has continued to edit it as well, and we have to re-publish it, so to speak, A minimum of 35 days before the Planning and Zoning Commission holds its public hearings To adopt the plan and consider stop. So um, that mean, last week, the Plan of Conservation Development Committee Meeting was canceled. And you know, so some of you would have had a little bit of a transition to this meeting That now is our consultant giving you an update, and it's basically medium 16, which would have been last week's committee meeting On tonight, so the consultant and Jim Mahoney, I are here to facilitate.
Okay.
Before it goes out to the town clerk for the minimum of 35 days, posting the minimum of 35 days before your public hearing, Which we were hoping to have it in the middle of June.
Uh huh, okay. All right, so everyone has received a copy Of the plan, and I'm sorry that I could not make the.
Do that without having a form.
I know, I'm sad, I'm.
There's a number of.
Yeah, all right. So has everyone had a chance to look? I mean, it's a large dark document, but has everyone had a chance to look at it? I guess we're looking for sort of impressions or things that sort of hop out.
Francisco's going to have a little bit of a presentation for you.
All right, great. Well, the floor is yours.
And can you all see my screen?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and today is May 4th, not April 27th. This presentation was originally crafted for our meeting last week.
Okay.
All right, um, so we have a very brief agenda this evening for our purposes. And there it is, two items. To review recent revisions that we've made to the P O C D document. And and that being said, to hear any comments or that or questions that you might have, any direction that you could provide us, And then talk about our next steps in this process. So we have received comments from individuals Regarding the plan, and we filtered through some of those comments, and and We've made a couple of very minor changes to the document as a result of comments received. And Jim and Maureen have reviewed the document and provided me with some feedback. So we've also made some very minor revisions, just to get it more up to date, mostly with some ongoing changes To some of the Ted sites and some other items To ensure the document is as up to date and accurate as possible. So we've made some of those changes. I just want to walk you through those very quickly and then open it up to any comments Or on requested revisions that you might have. So first, we we modified the language of the economic development goal a little bit, Just to make sure it was consistent throughout the document, and this was direction that we got from From Finance Department was to not only diversify the town's property base, but Expand it as well. So you see this item highlighted in yellow is is what we added To the language, and that's consistent throughout the document now. And and so we we also added that within the text of the document, within that goal, and within some of the supporting texts on page six, page 14. Next, at our prior, at a prior meeting, we had, it was council meeting, we had some Questions or concerns about the way that we described water quality. Um, and basically what Some of the data that we presented from Connecticut Deep Met. So um, we expanded some of the language to make it clear exactly what those water quality classifications mean And how they're applied to Berlin's water bodies. So I hope that removes any confusion. This is a really important issue. There are some deficiencies in water quality In some of the water bodies in Berlin, and I think it's very important to point those out, because the plan makes a number of recommendations That if followed through would help improve water quality in the in some of these bodies of waters And supports your MS four permit program. So I do think it's important to keep that information in the plan. But it was also important to make sure that we describe it so that it's clear exactly as to what that data from deep means. All right, next, we just provided a little bit of clarity about the nursing jobs that are In Berlin or tied to Berlin based upon the data that we have. And with most of those or a good portion of those being home healthcare Employees of home healthcare businesses located in town. Because you do have a lot of nursing jobs, and the question might be, well, where's, we don't have a big hospital or a lot of healthcare facilities. So where are those nurses? And the answer is they're working for employers located out of Berlin And working in homes all over the region. We updated Steel Center, of course, is, you know, things change from month to month and and from year to year. And so we've updated some of the description of the activity at that site to reflect The development program as it currently stands. And you know, all the text in blue or Jim's comments to me about what needs to be updated. And so in in the plan document itself, it just reads as normal text. Um, we also, apparently there's a project That was denied, as I understand, or not advanced, and so we removed reference to that at Ted's Site Five. Um, additional description of Steel Center, we updated this as well to be consistent with the development program. And it was also recommended that we identify the Berlin Visiting Nurse Association as A resource in the community and a town affiliated agency. So we have found a very nice picture of them that's now in the plan and have a description of what they do and their importance in the community.
I just, can I just pop in on that?
Yes, please do.
All right, Francisco, you were you were talking about the Nurses Association going back a couple of slides.
Right here. Yep.
Yeah, but you were saying that they don't just represent Berlin, but they go out.
Oh, 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 yeah, oh, so, yeah, the nursing jobs, let me go back to that.
Yeah.
So when in in our economic development or our economic and market analysis for the town, Um, the data that we have From Census Bureau and other databases shows a lot of nursing jobs located out of Berlin.
Okay.
And um In fact, skilled, here it is right here in the text, skilled nursing care facilities rank as the top industry sector in town, Employing over 800 people and encompassing 58% of healthcare jobs. So I I think the the statistic may cause a little bit of confusion about where in the world could 800 nurses possibly be employed in Berlin? Right, you don't, you don't have a big hospital or any hospital for that matter. And the answer is that they are employed by nursing care Companies that are located in Berlin that have nurses working all over the region. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so in other words, okay, I just, it's just when we originally touched down on it when you were first giving the information. It, I had the impression that 809 nurses were all working in Berlin, taking care of all the seniors in Berlin. But then as you went further on, it, you you spelled it out that they might be living here, or they might be based out of this home office. But that doesn't necessarily mean they're working in Berlin. They're just, the home office is here, but they're off in Rocky Hill or Newington or something like that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Neighbor and community, okay, all right.
So we added some language to provide clarity of that, and it's occurring to me now that maybe there's actually a little bit more language we could add To be absolutely clear about what that means. Our concern was that people would just see in in our In our description and our charts of employment sectors and jobs in Berlin, they could see 800 Nursing jobs and think to themselves, where, how could this data be accurate?
Yeah.
You know, where in the world are those nurses employed? So we're trying to bring some clarity. Yeah.
All right, okay.
I might, I might actually add a sentence about them being employed, potentially employed in the region and outside of Berlin.
Or just a sentence that they're, they're, they're home based here.
Yep, yeah.
No.
No.
Can I explain a little, Francisco? So the, we have several home care agencies that have their office in Berlin. It's not just the, you know, we're not talking DNA, we're talking the.
Different agencies, like the American, the one on the Berlin Turnpike, keep me home.
Right, there's all those agencies and their offices are here, the nurses come here, get them, you know, to their.
Get their work and take off.
But then they go out and serve people beyond the limits of Berlin.
Okay, all right.
Territory is larger than Berlin, but they're, they're a bunch of different companies, they're not just.
Yeah.
Like he said, a single provider or a single hospital.
Okay.
Does that make more sense?
Yeah.
I think this watching confused me.
Yeah, all right, okay, we're good on that.
All right, so we've updated the document to explain that, and I'll check it again just to make sure it's absolutely clear about that, okay?
All right.
So that is different than the nursing, the Visiting Nurses Association, Which we have also included a description of them as a town resource. And then it was also recommended that we add A couple of properties to our list of historically significant properties. So we've added the Blair Factory Site and the Bandbox School.
All right, I hate to sound, I hate to sound ignorant, but we added what?
Are you familiar with either the Blair Factory Site or the Bandbox School?
No, I'll be, I'm going to be honest with you. Where do we, do we know where they are?
You sound very honest.
By down by St. Paul's on Main Street. That's where the old museum used to be.
You mean the Peck Memorial Library, the original one? The old library, okay. All right, so that's, that used to be a school. And then what's the other one that we're adding? I'm sorry.
The Blair Factory Site, and that's Blair, B L A I R.
All right, and I'm confused. Anyone know where the Blair Factory Site is? Where would, Tim, do you know where the Blair Factory Site is? Is that where the Pistol Creek, where the original Factory was for making gun parts, Pistol Creek?
Oh, Monday.
We do have Pistol Creek Site listed separately.
All right, Tim Zigma, do you know where the Blair Factory Site was?
Yeah, I think it was in East Berlin, actually the lot next door to my house.
So he might know.
Are you on a historic, this, are you on a historic property?
No, well.
Is there a building there?
Yeah, actually, part of my property was that historical, there was a historical site there, yes, that burnt down. Actually, there was two buildings there that were burnt down, one, I think, was this factory.
Did you? Trying to search, it was called Blair Manufacturing.
Yeah, they manufactured, I think, uh, They manufactured uh Parachutes During the war.
Huh. Do you have one of your historic friends on the, can you, can you text?
I think that's it, but I don't know.
Jim Mahoney, I don't know if Jim Mahoney would know.
I don't know. I think we must, we must have gotten the information from Lorraine, so we're.
We did. We did.
Okay, oh, so Lorraine's the one who forwarded the information, Lorraine stuff?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, well, she said it was there, then that's what it was.
Oh, it's there. That's what she said, just there.
All right, well, thank you for that. I'm sorry to stop your presentation.
Okay, now's, now's the time to get it right.
All right, I, see, I mistalked with you, so. Alrighty, go on.
All right, so it was just those two items.
All right.
We also added one farm to our list, Fontanella Farm On Chamberlain Highway. And in that, presumably I got the location right on the map as well, is located between Chamberlain Growers and the Bostrom Tree Farm.
Okay, and which farm is that, that we're adding?
Fontanella.
Oh, fine, okay, Fontanella, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, terrific, thank you.
We did not previously have them on on our list or map, we added that.
Fontanella is immediately south of the H2O Farms.
They were the ones with.
Apple Lane.
Yeah, they have Apple Lane. I hope they've, they saved that building. I like that building, that used to, used to sell their vegetables there and stuff.
Um, the, and I do want to just comment that, and I believe it was distributed at one of your meetings that Mrs. Fontanella Provided the commission with why she wanted, they, they should be on the list.
Okay.
As what their farm does. So that's part of the P O C D record.
All right, that's, that's fine. I'm happy to have the farms.
We did find that tree on a variable map. I'm trying to figure out the location. Because the roads aren't.
Yeah.
All right, we're good with that?
Yep.
Very good. Next, and this is on our future land use plan, and you'll, you'll remember for a couple of meetings in a row, we had a discussion about The Office Technology Zone. And we had called it by the same name, those areas on the Future Land Use Map. And we have changed that to Corporate Office instead.
Oh, I see, okay.
All right, to make it more focused on office type uses. And to, we we also, as you remember, I had concerns about using a future land use Category that shared the exact same name as a zoning district, because it might cause confusion between the two different Maps and their purposes. So we have changed that to Corporate Office on the map and plan.
Okay. That will work.
And we have also added, and this on page 115, a recommendation that The Town Council establish a P O C D Implementation Committee. That would include membership from key boards and commissions That would meet quarterly to insist, to assist P N Z to oversee implementation of the plan.
You may recall in previous plans, there was an Implementation Committee, the 2013 plan did not end up with an Implementation Committee. The 2003 plan had one, and it was because as you go into the implementation, You see that there are Certain boards or commissions or departments that are charged with or the key Player to get something done, it's in the plan, so it brings all those people together and to stay on track To actually be moving forward with the plan over the next 10 years.
So would the implementation committee, um, be an advisory committee to planning and zoning, or would they be more a directive?
There, there, there would be a committee that the town council sets up to, um, to um, move the plan forward. That was adopted by the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, who sees what first, or do they become reactionary to planning, and so I'm just trying to figure out the pecking order here. Um, so if you have an implementation committee, do they just watch to see what we're doing to make?
No, they're, they're, they're more actively working to get it done. Um, Francisco, do you have a page of the implementation you could bring up?
I'm just confused on how.
Perhaps, or is that too difficult?
Um, no, no, I can, let me, let me bring, open the plan, and I'll just have to switch over to that window, but it'd just take a, a second, and I think
Yeah, no, take your time.
Sense if you see the page, it, where, um, commit, the, the P O C D has a goal. This was just stated, and that goal is, the lead on that goal is Conservation Commission to, you know, seek to connect this trail to this area, this area of open space to another area of open space. And they're working in the next, you know, maybe it's not at the highest priority, but it's a mid priority, so in three or four years, they're still realizing it's something to do, and they work on how are we gonna get this done? The committee members.
Go ahead.
No, it would be, it would be to implement these goals.
And, and can you see the table now?
I can, I can see it, is that?
If you put them in on a line, it would
Yeah, let me, let me
Is there a specific page that that's on, cuz I can?
Yeah, it starts, it, it's in section nine, and it starts around page one eighteen.
About one eighteen, okay, alright, I think I was just there, almost there, I was almost there, sorry.
The, the section starts around one fifteen, one sixteen, and, and the page I'm on is, is one eighteen.
Okay, so one eighteen, alright, I have it.
Okay. So this summary takes all of the recommendations of the plan, condenses them all into a table, and that, within the table, we identify the lead on, on some of the, on the plan's recommendations, uh, the specific actions. Who's lead it, and, and what, who, uh, is the partner, and, and what the priority level is. So, an implementation committee would really be tasked with going through this list and focusing particularly on high priority items. And coordinating, and ensuring that P N Z, that you're working on these items, and you have the resources you need, uh, both the commission and and departmentally. And also coordinating with whoever partners should be uh, in the room, and so that's part of the idea of having different members from various boards and commissions sitting on the committee, is that they have an open line of communication with various boards and commissions across the town.
Okay.
And they would be more of an, uh, they'd basically be keeping track and advising on, you know,
So.
How to go about accomplishing goals.
Yeah, and if you look at, say, the second item, where we view the town's land use regulations, including zoning regulations, okay, those are the regulations that this commission amends. But then you have, you know, further in the lit, you have floodplain subdivision and inland wetland regulations, inland wetlands is the one that amends their own reg, the inland wetlands regulations, so they would be the one that, that takes charge of amending their regulations, and then in, on, in accordance with keeping up with environmental issues, et cetera.
Conservation, what's T M?
Town manager?
Town manager.
Town manager?
You scroll down just a little bit, most of them are looking at
So they'd be advising, they'd be advising all the different commissions and everything.
Yes.
On how to achieve the goals.
But for instance, the, the grants.
Yeah.
Staff.
Yeah.
To write the grants and goes through town council, staff from multiple departments, but I will credit to Mahoney with doing a lot of those.
Yeah.
And, but it goes through the town manager's office, and then to town council to get permission to apply for the grant. Don't come to us, to the plan, zoning commission and through our office.
So, so would the advisory commission then be proactive? To a certain extent.
So, again, and, and, um, I don't wanna kinda jump in, cuz I haven't been going to all these meetings, but it's, it's a committee. So it's not, it, it doesn't serve the purpose, um, or should it ever serve the purpose of usurping your statutory authority.
Uh, yeah.
Understand that, re- really, it's, it's to gauge that whether or not there's been progress made, I, I think that's the purpose, right, is there progress being made towards the goals?
Yeah.
So what, what goal, I mean, they would have input, you know, they would be specifically, I think, looking at, you know, are the strategies being implemented, are the strategies suitable to meet the goals, because as you embark upon these different strategies, you know, there may be tweaking that's necessary and so forth in order to accomplish the goals. So it's not, it's not really any different than what, um, for example, uh, I'm gonna just use the Affordable Housing Committee, because that was an advisory committee. And ultimately, they're not decision makers, just as Maureen pointed out, of course, you know, you, as, as as the entity with, as the land use agency with statutory authority to, uh, develop the regulations and amend the regulations, you are the ultimate decision maker. Uh, so, so more, it's just the purpose that they serve, and, and it can, you know, and it really is ultimately town council who apply, uh, who, who would be giving them, you know, the authority in terms of the scope of what they would be doing.
Yeah.
Um, because we know that about committees, right?
Yeah.
Um, so ul- ultimately, but that I think is what's envisioned.
Yeah.
Of course.
Well, I was happy to see that, um, let me just flip back here, that, um, I said, I guess it was item eight. Would have been pursue state grants for the acquisition of open space, and I know that goes Conservation Commission and the town manager. And I know that, that Jim Mahoney does a lot of the grant work, or you seem to have a, a real feel for what's out there. And I, I'm thrilled that that's part of it, because there's so many opportunities for the town to buy beautiful open space that's usable by the town. Um, and it's not gonna break the bank either, so to speak, I mean, the prices are almost like to the point where I feel like personally writing a check and buying it just to get it off, you know, the, so, I, 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 I'm, I, that's very encouraging, and I'm glad because I think we, we have to strike that balance between housing, commercial, and open space. And I don't want open space to go away. I'm gonna fight for it.
I think, I think
Alright, so I'm very happy about that.
Yeah. This implementation plan, I think, you know, it did come up as a, uh, as a comment at the council meeting. Uh, how are we gonna make, you know, we have a lot of recommendations, you have a lot of recommendations in this plan, how are we gonna get it implemented? And, you know, of course, we always hear about plans that go on the shelf, and the im- the implementation committee is really a way to make sure that it doesn't go on the shelf, and that people are really paying attention on a continuous basis to the plan and trying to implement the, the ideas that, that have been before.
Uh, I agree, too many times it's put away, and we forget about it. And, uh, and then we'll have something come before us, and, you know, and, and we're kind of searching for a direction. And it's right in front of us, but out of sight, out of mind, right, you know, I guess, anyway, but yeah, I'm glad that that's in there. Alright, okay, anything else? Anyone else have any comments? Do you guys? Is that the end of the adjustments that we have, Francisco?
Yeah, we're, uh, I think very near the end, um, let, let me go back to the presentation. Alright, yes, that, that was the, the last item.
The last one, okay.
Now, let, so let, let's go on to
One second, okay. There we go. It wasn't showing up properly.
Okay. So now what remains? Well, um, we are still awaiting, uh, any comments from both council and Prague. And, and Maureen, have we heard anything at all from either body?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Um, a- as a reminder, they are advisory to you, and ultimately, uh, you have the authority to adopt the plan as you see fit. Uh, we, we, we are compelled to give them an opportunity to provide comment, we ideally, we want council to adopt, to endorse the plan, we want their full support, and we'd like to include or be able to respond to any comments they have. But, um, council's failure to provide you with comments does not prevent you from bringing the plan to a public hearing for adoption.
Okay.
And Prague can wait until the public hearing to provide comment, they could send a staff person to the public hearing along with the rest of the public to provide comment on the plan.
You know, uh, let me just ask you, and Maureen, maybe you can chime in on this one too, under current work, the last bullet point is begin zoning work, affordable housing plan recommendations, and B T D reviews? Alright.
So, as part of their, the, the contract, when you, when, uh, um, commission decides to move forward with a consultant, the review of our zoning regulations was wrapped into so, uh, okay. Certain portions of the zoning regulations, a limited scope, you know, it was limited because that the focus was the P O C D, but with this zoning work of the areas um, that have been of concern, and again, that was cited in the moratoriums that, that, that moratorium, the multi-family moratorium, for instance, that our consultant was charged with looking into the regulations.
Okay, alrighty. And so, um, if I wanted to comment, say, on the affordable housing or the B T D review, I could base that input on the current zoning regulations and this, or if I wanted to look at it and review it just to sort of, uh, freshen.
Sorry, I'm not really understanding.
Alright.
Let me take a stab at that if I could.
Okay, yeah, please.
And you folks are, I'm, I'm gonna start animating these slides to show one bullet at a time, because you're jumping ahead.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to, I just didn't want you to jump off of the slide.
Yeah.
Cause I caught it, and I thought, well, B T D review.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, let, let me, let me give you a primer, and, and for last week's meeting, when we had the full, uh, meeting available to us, and you didn't have an agenda packed with other things too, we had planned on, uh, getting started with this, and
Okay.
And giving you a kind of introduction as to what it is that we're taking on, and what it is we need to accomplish. And it, it's not a huge scope of work, uh, as Maureen mentioned, it's part of our contract, part of our scope of work. But we have been tasked with reviewing, uh, your zoning regulations, and specifically, uh, the Berlin Turnpike District zoning regulations. To make any updates that might be necessary to best serve the town. Um, given your experience with those regs over the past couple of years, afford you an opportunity uh, to weigh in on how you think those could or should be changed, if at all. And to prepare specific recommendations for amending those regulations as needed. And in addition to that, we've been tasked with taking the zoning recommendations of the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, and it made multiple zoning recommendations. And, uh, further exploring those recommendations to see if they're feasible, if, if they would be beneficial and supportive of creating affordable housing, and if so, um, how exactly should the zoning regulations be changed? And so we would make, uh, specific recommendations for amendments to the zoning regulations um, for your consideration, and this, this would be done, this work effort is separate from the P O C D, it's a independent of, in many ways of the P O C D, so it's not tied to our P O C D process and our public hearing, and it's not gonna be in the P O C D document. Um, it will likely be one or, one or two memorandums from us, reports with recommendations that you could consider for making, uh, amendments to your zoning regulations at some future point, whether it's this summer and the fall, or whenever it, it is, you, you have the bandwidth to take that on.
Okay, okay.
And we are gonna walk you through that process, and, um, I expect we'll be able to use our next meeting to get started with that, we've done a lot of work to date in terms of reviewing, uh, the zoning regulations and making some very, pointing out some opportunities for amendments that might help support affordable housing. Um, and we, we think might be, you know, uh, is, would be consistent with the P O C D and would be, uh, a good fit for the town, so we're, we'll walk you through those in the next meeting, if it takes takes a couple of meetings to, to get it done, that's fine, if we have to go, uh, past June, I, I think we expect it wouldn't take more than a couple of months to do this work, um, but it, it'd take a little while to walk you through it. Um, uh, but in terms of the, the actual work, we've done a good part of the review, and it's no matter of getting you on board, walking you through it, and, and getting your feedback and input into the process.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, so that's, it's separate task, I don't wanna conflate that with our P O C D schedule here.
Alright, okay.
With respect to the P O C D, go, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, Francisco, it's hard for you to see that I'm trying to
No, I can't see anyone, you're, you're that big.
I'm, um, just for the commission to understand and make sure I'm, that we're all following. Um, the memorandum you referred to on the B T D was, was drafted, was not drafted. And get, because it wasn't given, right, but it was going to be presented at the meeting. Then they didn't get it?
We, we prepared a draft memorandum of um, potential or opportunities and ideas for amendments uh, to the zoning regulations, support affordable housing. It's a work in progress, and, and that is just kind of a working memorandum, it's not anything final. What we wanna do with you is walk you through those ideas one by one. And get your input into the process, so that we could finalize our recommendations. Um, and that will be a report or a document that you can then, you know, uh, work on, you know, you can implement some of it, all of it, none of it, uh, it's it, it, but it would complete our work, uh, with respect to the zoning review and recommendations.
Okay, but that would be separate from the P O C D, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's all under one contract, it, it's definitely built upon the recommendations of both the P O C D and Affordable Housing Plan. But none of this content, uh, is going directly into the P O C D. You know, the P O C D does make a lot of recommendations specific to the Berlin Turnpike and um, to housing and affordable housing, as does obviously the Affordable Housing Plan. Uh, so it's really, it, it's almost like we're immediately following through on the P O C D's recommendations, and this is almost the first item that we're getting started with. And, and this is one of the first items, uh, coming out of the Affordable Housing Plan that it recommended that we're, we're working on, so we're this, this is, this represents those two plans being set in motion.
Okay, and when is our next meeting for the P O C D, or do we have another meeting?
Once again, a slide ahead of me.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'll shoot, okay, alright, go.
No problem, alright, so let, let, let me talk about our, our timeline.
Go ahead, you talk about what you
For the P O C D. So if we are to keep a June public hearing, and right now we're holding June fifteen as a potential public hearing date. Uh, we need to file Uh, we need to file the draft plan with the town clerk by May eleven. And that's for public review. Yeah, a hard copy is filed, it's posted on a town website. Now, i- if for some reason we do get some comment from either CROG or council following that posting, we can uh then bring that, those comments to the public hearing. Um, discuss them and agree upon uh you can then have the option, if the comments are minor, to adopt the plan with those changes being made. And then we make the changes and then we file the plan with the state. If, if there's any major that comes, anything from town council that, that is really wants to take the plan or its recommendations in a very different direction, then we need to regroup and pull back. Okay, which, so you can also, you can always um re, you know, delay or reschedule a public hearing for a couple of weeks later, a month later, uh whatever's needed so that um in that event, if we need to make any real substantive changes to the plan, we should then uh make those changes and then file that revised draft with the town clerk. And that would then start a thirty-five day process again and push things out. We're hoping that we're not gonna um, I don't expect CROG may have a bunch of minor recommendations, but they're not gonna change your, your policy because that are, we recommend because we've reviewed the plan for consistency with the state and regional plans and Berlin wasn't in, in in the CROG region in their pro, when their prior plan was conducted. So there's, there's nothing directly relevant. So I I don't expect any big changes from them. And and I do expect council is gonna support this plan, but we are, we are eager to see their comments. Alright, so those, those, the key dates right now is May eleventh to file with town clerk and for public review. And then uh which enables us to hold a hearing on June fifteen.
Okay.
Right, and and then we expect that in June, assuming we can have productive meeting uh in a couple of weeks, May, and then another one in June, we might be able to wrap up our zoning work by June, which concludes our, our contract and our work on the project. Alright, so next, so here's what this schedule looks like, right? We're, we're already well in motion. We're about halfway into this adoption approval process. Uh, so we submitted to council and CROG uh about thirty days ago or so. And we're approaching May eleventh, right? We're a week away in fact. And uh so we need to uh file with town clerk, post it to the website. Uh, and then that brings us to public hearing. You have to do all your usual notices for public hearing. And then after adoption, we submit it to, and that's the process. Now, um, in the big scale of things, we're getting very close to the end. We, we've extended this a couple of times, but we're almost there. And here you see, we're in the middle of the adoption process and we're, we're under, we're now getting off the ground with the zoning review. Um, my, myself, my team have been working with Jim and Maureen on it. Um, but we gotta have to get you plugged into it. So when is our next meeting? Um, did, did someone ask that question already?
Yes.
Alright. It is scheduled, or following our regular schedule, it would be Thursday, May twenty-fifth at five thirty.
Okay, hold on.
And I'm hoping that works for everyone.
Alright.
I don't, would anybody be open to moving that later in the day, maybe six thirty?
And that, that's fine for me too.
So as we had, we had to have them later um during the warmer weather months. And then we moved them earlier when we went through into the winter and the early sunsets and um, I think it's not unexpected that we're probably going to be making them a later meeting again.
Okay.
But.
So six thirty?
Two committee members that are here can probably.
Can we try to agree on that now, six or six thirty?
I think, yeah.
I could do six thirty.
That, well, well, let, let's make it six thirty.
Absolutely open to the public. They're on Zoom. They're recorded and.
You wanna come, you can come and participate here.
Yep. And I get that inquiry. I've, I've told a number of people they can come. We've had a couple of people come. But most, yeah, there's, there's few meetings that, under special circumstances, such as your executive sessions, where the public is not um able to participate.
Even though those meetings, those meetings, yeah.
Able to attend.
Those meetings are public, but then that sex portion of it is not public. So I, I expect that our agenda for this next meeting will be to hopefully discuss any comments received from CROG and council. And um, and to dive right into the, the zoning work that I discussed.
Okay, that'd be great.
So I, I expect it'll be a very full meeting. We have a lot, lot to cover on the zoning plan.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, that concludes my presentation.
Alrighty. Uh, thank you. Uh, anyone else have any questions or comments? Alright, Maureen, anything?
Not with me.
No? Alright, good deal. I think you guys are doing some good work and um, Tim, did you have something to say? Okay. Alright. So we'll see you on the twenty-fifth. Excellent. And thank you.
Night, everyone.
Alright, good night.
Good night.
Good night. Is Jim hanging out? Or you know, Jim's calling good night too. He says, oh, hallelujah, I'm out of here.
So we, the three of us, Jim, Francisco and I always have a free.
Meeting, meeting?
Station meeting. This, this one we had before the pity meeting, but each week, so that's
Okay.
Leave it up to Francisco to do the talking.
Alrighty. That's alright. But uh if you do have a chance to, and you wanna participate, even if this, you wanna jump in this late in the game, I mean, that's, that's fine. Um, we do know the, what we, what we will be talking about, especially as far as rewriting the zoning regulations. So if you have any thoughts or whatever, uh forward them or please attend the meeting. They are welcome to. Okay. Alright, so we can move on to the next, I guess, item on the agenda, which is the public hearings. No, no?
So you actually added?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we added something. We added this. Yeah.
We'll adjust this right now because.
Oh, okay.
You don't mind?
No. By all means.
So uh with regard to the matter that was added for uh the applications that have been submitted on behalf of nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike LLC. Um, the reason why I stepped out of the room earlier is I had been waiting for, for council um for the property owner to call me back. Cause I was trying to get ahold of him today after speaking to your planner. Um, so I did step out and have a conversation with him, and that is uh attorney Chris Smith. Um, he, and he has requested uh that, that I request of you that you wait until your next meeting, which is two weeks from today, correct?
Yes.
So the, so the eighteenth, um that you wait until the eighteenth to consider whether or not to receive these applications, uh because he's aware of the fact that there is a moratorium that's in place on multifamily housing. He wants to be able to submit something for your consideration before you make the decision about whether or not to receive the application. So um if this matter could simply go over until uh May eighteenth, um then he will get something in again so that, that way he can address the issue. Of the, essentially the applicability of the moratorium to the applications that have been submitted.
Okay. When is our moratorium? Uh, cause I know that we purposely made it so that we could try to do this P O C D stuff and try to get everything. What's, what's?
That is in your um, the package we provided.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
And it goes to August eleventh.
August eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
That's what that legal notice that's in front of you um is telling you from February second. Thank you. Uh, voted to it for the extension of the moratorium on multifamily development to August eleven, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, wait a minute. So.
This page right here.
Yeah.
Page.
Yes.
Moratorium was extended. The page is behind it where we, we accidentally, the moratorium words are the same. We, we copied the wrong wrong version. So we put the legal ad on top of it.
Oh, okay.
You that you extended this moratorium. You then extended, we just copied though.
So this one's correct.
We printed out the wrong one.
Okay, okay. That makes a lot more sense.
I'm sorry for that.
Previous one. We printed out the previous.
I got so excited about the P O C D that I misplaced my paperwork so my, that, that, that's on me. Okay, so.
It's so.
But Brian kept.
It's okay.
So that's on, until the end of, the, the middle of August right now.
Council, would you agree with that decision then to?
I think that that's fine. Yes, give him absolutely the opportunity uh to submit what he'd like to submit for your consideration.
But, alright, just let me play the devil's advocate. If we've got a moratorium on stuff, why would we be even looking at any of that? I mean.
These, these are eight thirty G. These would be considered eight thirty G application.
Yeah.
So yes, he would like the opportunity to address the moratorium in that context. So he'll submit something for your consideration. So you are con- continuing consideration of whether or not to receive the applications.
Okay.
At the request of council, Chris Smith.
Okay.
I will, I will make the motion uh to continue this commission bid as this of consideration of these two items until our next meeting on
May.
May eighteenth.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Dyken. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, as opposed, so moved. Alrighty, and now we move on to the public hearing. So the first item is the proposed amendment of the planning and zoning staff to the Berlin regulations for section eleven D D, planned residential infill development. Alright. So we've had this for a little bit of time, and I think where it really comes down to is um, as we looked at it, um, we were trying to figure out how many homes per acre. And I think we floated somewhere between four and six, and then we started talking about four and five. Um, and I think that's where we left it, because everyone sort of got stuck in the in the mud, so to, so to speak. So that's where we are right now. And I know Tim and I were doing battle.
Yes.
So, Maureen, I know you said you had some comments that you would like to make.
So let's have it, I would have them whatever. The um, I wanted to be a little more organized with my comments. But um my recollection is that the last discussion as um, Chairman Veely just noted was something that balanced closer to the eleven thousand square feet, ten thousand, eleven thousand square feet per unit. And um, I just wanna express the planning concern that that um, modifying the existing, existing regulations um that restrictively um with restrictive dens- densities may result in a regulation that's not actually an incentive and an economic opportunity to redevelop those sites, those motel sites. The purpose of the regulation was to um have another housing choice and create an opportunity um that, that redevelops motel sites into small concise homes. We have a lot of our eleven zoning. And that's what eleven thousand square feet would be. It would be pretty, you know, open as far as, um, and this was what we have in our single family zone. It's not even the two family zone. And um, so I would encourage you to consider um a density that's more in line with our seven zoning or our seven two family zoning, which is, which balances out to approximately five thousand square feet um per unit. Um, and I was trying to do an analysis and like every time I start to do the math and the analysis, I seem to get um waylaid by something else coming in or some other issues, but was trying to approximate to something like the New Birch, which is on the south end of the Berlin Turnpike. The development that backs into um Silver Lake, um near Clopakie's new project. You know where I'm talking about. It's a bunch of eighteen units. There's eighteen units there. And that's on two point eight two acres. And these are approximate acreage, cause I had to do them on the map myself. Um, they are attached units, um but, you know, and that those are, would average out the plot of land L's up, zoom out a little bit. You'll see. You kinda do a outline of the property with your person, see how it goes up with that little catch back there. So that really isn't part of the openness of the site, I wouldn't say, around the units. Um, but even with that, it's around sixty-eight hundred square feet per unit. And I'm sorry, you, at least right for the lot size. You know, if the lot was divided by twenty, by the eighteen units, it would be sixty-eight hundred. And, and the discussion, so I'm, we're switching um um formulas, because you, you, the comments you just made were about um how many units per acre. But the converse, uh previously, we had conversations of square feet per unit. So my calculations are in the square feet per unit. I'd have to trans, I'd have to um, yeah, um, convert them if I went. So just understand, I'm talking square feet per unit.
Yeah, I.
Of the lot.
I would.
That's around sixty-eight hundred. If you take that L off, which I did just by measurement, it's fifty-seven hundred.
Okay.
So it just, I'm showing somewhat the density. Um Sunny Ledge is around sixty-five hundred. That's on the, on New Britain Road. And I did some others as well, but.
It would be easier for me to like, you know, imagine and picture if it's set by acre.
Okay. I have a table and I was trying, that's what's not complete. And I was working on, so I just pulled a few of them. Um, and Marjorie Moore back here is forty-three hundred and fifty.
Uh, can I make a comment? Tim?
Sure you can. Yes.
Okay. Well, all of a sudden, uh, we looked and, we're looking at multifamily condo units, whatever, uh there, that's not what the scope of the, the thing was. It was single family residential. Uh, so that's where the R seven came in effect. Uh, but there needed to be a poten- potential of a developer doing it, basically. Uh, with our eleven type situation, there's no potential to, to do it. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a mute thing to even do the overlay zone. Uh, because there's no potential to get it done, uh to do the thing that it, the overlay zone was designed to do was to uh give a little incentive for those, these older motels uh to be redeveloped uh and brought up to today's standards, basically. Uh, and that incentive is not there at, at our eleven zone. Uh, you know, and if it goes down to our seven zone, I could see the potential being there. Uh, and the number of units put in there are not a large amount of units. Uh, but uh, it's nothing different than uh Madison Street Kensington, R seven zone. Uh, so, you know, that's a, that's what we're looking to. The only thing, the only thing was different in the R seven zone, R seven allowed two family houses, I think. And, and we will go basically take it out to single family residential. So I think that that's, if I'm correct, Ma- Maureen, is that the way we leave? Hello?
The la, the, just the end of your sentence I missed?
I said, I said originally that it was supposed to be a single family residential, and the only thing out of the our seven zone, we were taking out two family homes to uh, put it as single family residential.
Right, so single family was, or rather single unit buildings were the direction that you also gave.
That, that, that's right.
Meaning, another, if I um, and so our seven zoning, which is seventy five hundred unit, the square feet per unit is required, calculates backwards to or other way to five point eight units per acre. So that's a five point eight six units per acre is about what our seven zone is.
Yeah.
So we're talking the same calculation.
Yeah, that helps.
That's what I've been trying to convert them. Um, and I initially had brought to your attention that where we allow two families in our sevens is at five thousand square feet. So that adds, you know, another couple of units per acre.
So we're still kind of in that area that we've been.
Between the five and the seven.
The last meeting, I heard more of the direction going upwards towards the eleven thousand.
Well, that was.
And that made me very concerned that the regulation was not going to be be usable, it wouldn't be an economic point that we would have the incentive for motel sites to be redeveloped.
Yeah.
And may not be in line with adding a housing choice. Um, I also wanted to clarify a little bit of confusion that I heard from that meeting. Or that I was thinking people might have had at that meeting. Because because of the comparison to the our single and two family zones, which are where you would have a subdivision. Just keep in mind that this is a regulation for a multifamily development, they're freestanding units. But it's still a multifamily, so whether it's apartments or condos, you know, whether it's rental or ownership, it's still a one piece of property with one owner of the property. The owner, the the person occupying the unit would not own a small parcel. It would have a small parcel or that uh, an equivalent amount of square footage associated with there with the with the density, the density. You know, it could all be common land that is completely used, they could get what generally referred to as an exclusive use area around their unit, that they could have their own little garden, or sometimes you don't have that, it's all community land except for footprint of your of your unit.
But.
So I just wanted to keep in mind, it wasn't a subdivision, the road is doesn't.
Yeah, exactly.
This is a
A revitalization.
Family that instead of being a high rise of Berlin three stories, you know.
It's still high enough for me.
Guys with interior hallways or exterior hallways, and you go into the units. These are units you access from the outside, from the ground level, individual units, but they are a multifamily property. I just want, that it just felt like a subdivision and the terminology might have been misunderstood.
Well, I think you got a little.
Especially with the with the amount of new membership.
Yeah. And I I think that's one thing that Tim and I sort of debated, because we were talking, I was talking about rental and like, and Tim did bring up an interesting point. Where he said, well, why couldn't somebody do it like have the units refurbished or whatever, or, you know, reapplied? But perhaps they would want to sell the condo, so you have like an homeowner's association fee, where the person would actually buy the unit and own the unit, but not own the land, like a like a condo, even though there might only be five or six units involved in that little revitalization, that they would have that option to do that, because homeownership is always preferred over rental. If you can do it, but so.
And that's, that's my, that's my conclusion is that we don't want to encourage the rental part of it, you wanted to ask the single family residential homes. You can rent your home or one owner can own them all and rent rent the homes, or uh, they could be sold individually uh, to to individual homeowners. Likes like Maureen said, with a land uses area. Or they can be a R seven zone subdivision.
Well, I.
The lot lines with a single family homes on them.
Now, I think that you'd have a problem with the R seven, I think that you would have to give it just a revitalization with an option to, the owner of the property or the development would decide whether or not to rent or to sell the unit. But now you're talking about rezoning, and now you're talking, I don't know, I'd I'd like to stay away from that. I think it muddies the water too much, especially if you have the option for renting or buying the unit.
Also, as I understand from what Maureen was just saying is that a subdivision does not fit into this regulation.
Yeah.
It's the whole parcel we're considering when we're looking at this.
Yeah, because we're basing it, we're trying to help the people who have these units that are disarray to revitalize them. So we don't want to, now all of a sudden, you're going to get involved with an R seven subdivision, now you're you're cutting up that little parcel. And it's it's never going to make it.
No, you're still coming up with the same number of homes. Okay, our seven development, you're coming up with the same number of homes. I just say, using the portion of our seven division, I think the numbers basically, seven thousand square foot lots. Uh, and and the home beyond that lot, now that's that could be a land uses lot, or it can be a regular subdivision lot. The number, single family homes, and that will change. Because the land is only going to develop how many homes can develop on those lots. So, and the option is the homeowner written a lot? I written a home or owning the home? That's the, that's the option. Uh, it's the option to the developer to have a association that all the homes are in the same association. Okay? You know, or it could be single family homes owning the lot, the the land. Uh, there is the options there to do everything, basically rentals, they could do the options of rentals with a seven thousand square foot land uses option. Single family homes with the owned seven thousand square foot lots. Or rental development, they all, they all, the all the options are there. And it gives the potential for a market to be for that property. If you restrict it. You you're, the potential's not there, and you might as well not do this, this.
I think Maureen has a comment on that.
So what I was getting, and this is the 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 thing that was confusing me with we got writing from the last meeting, is the mechanism for which to develop a regulation that's a subdivision that divides the property into several and separate and distinct parcels, is subdivision of land, which is a different charge of the commission and a different mechanism.
Yep.
Um, we pulled up just right now, Hattery Brook Homes, which is on Four Rod Road, it's the the, it's a multi-family, but they're freestanding units as far as I'm aware. Um, it's on Four Rod, just south of Patterson Way, I guess that what comes through there.
Yeah, it's over by Lori, Lori Ann, Lori Ann, it's almost, almost a camel on the way to Camel's Back, it's behind an industry, up front is an industry building.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So that is, can you click on it so it highlights in yellow? It's one piece of property, but they're individually owned.
Yes.
And and yeah, they're they're, I mean, they're more, less units per acre, because they have all that open land surrounding them. Um, on the outskirts, which none of the motel properties have land.
Yeah.
Nature where they could have that kind of area around them, and that I believe has quite a bit of wetlands on it as well. But that's where you have individual units and individually owned, but not a subdivided parcel, it's a terminology and a mechanism of subdivision versus multifamily that I want to make clear to the.
Yeah.
I, you know, if I could wrap my head around subdivision regs that could fit onto hotel parcels, I just can't.
Yeah, I.
That mechanism, and and working that out, we could put our energy into doing that, if that's what's desired, but that's.
No, I.
I don't think where the intent of modifying the planned infill regulations that are in place. Um, I I don't think that's.
Yeah.
And it was to create yet another type of housing option. Beckley Farms also has freestanding units, but that whole entire five phase project is on one piece of property, it's a multifamily.
Yeah.
I'll admit, it's not single family subdivided homes. Um, Silver Ridge.
Yep.
Same way, Silver Island.
Well, and I think that's what we're trying to do. I think that's what we're trying to do, we're just, we're trying to encourage them.
Higher end, as far as goes, but this seemed to be a pretty easy and
Yeah.
packed example to provide.
Well, I mean, well, okay, commissioners. Any, anyone else? Brian?
Yeah, what I'm looking at right now seems to be, you know, the direction that I think we should go with this regulation. I just guess it really comes down to what density we all can agree on.
Well, I think, you know, I'm I'm open to the idea of between the five and, what did we say, the the five and seven or something? Especially because we're we're looking at samples, you know, that it's limited because we're only dealing with the existing motel properties that we have and offering them a choice or a chance to revitalize them, to make them a better investment, and to make it prettier locations on the Berlin Turnpike, so I I think that's what the intent is, so I mean, I would, I would, I would go between the five and the seven.
I'd be happy splitting the difference at six.
Six?
I'd be.
That's six.
Directly in line with the R seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's six.
Per acre, yeah.
I was ready. Agree, John? Okay, all right. So we're looking at six per acre.
Okay, I'll continue with the modifications.
Okay, excellent.
And to show what that relates to on those parcels, which I think we have, I think that's on those sheets I handed out.
Yeah, I still have them. That's all right, well, that's okay, that's okay, we'll get it next time, all right, so is that it?
They will, if if all goes well in the next two weeks, we'll repackage together and make sure that all the commission members have this same information going into the calling this, hopefully to the close of the public hearing on this.
All right, so do we, do we want to keep the public hearing open, or do we want?
You, I I would suggest that you do so, so that we can make those
Okay.
additional modifications to the regulation.
Alrighty.
And, um, and then include that in the discussion.
All right, you're good with that, Tim, I think we're.
And you do have someone online.
All right, is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission regarding this issue? Now would be the time to let us know how you feel, either for or against it. All right, hearing none.
I'll make the motion to continue until our May eighteenth meeting.
Okay, motion to continue by Commissioner Rogan, the second by Ms. Miller, further discussion, then all those in favor? Aye. Tim?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, so move.
Still not, still not in agreement, but.
Well, we're still in public hearing, though.
We'll get to you, we'll get.
No, we're still in public hearing. Alrighty, moving on. Um, then we have the applicant who asked that we continue this without opening or testimony or anything else like that, was that that zone change application, so we don't, do we need a motion then to continue this to?
I do want to clarify, it was opened at the last meeting, he did his presentation at the last meeting, there's just no testimony at this meeting, he asked that you skip over it.
All right, so, somebody want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to continue the May eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hamel. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, those opposed, moved, old business. Okay, so the zoning regulation that's being continued to the eighteenth. And then, okay, so on to planners' comments. That takes us out of our business, on to the goodie stuff?
So, this was not posted on the agenda as far as far as discussion goes, I just want to get these to you.
Okay.
They are samples of the cannabis surveys from other communities.
Okay.
And so I'm just going to pass those for everybody to pay with them. And we're going to be working on developing a survey, and it looks to me like our council has something to add.
So we are working on getting others, because we are aware of other communities that did go the survey route. Um, and and look, I mean, some some of them use just a, and you can tell, some of them use just a survey monkey survey, and then, you know, some towns hired a consultant, you know, to 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 really control you know, responses and so on and so forth, so um, you know, we'll give you the gamut of information on that, we just don't have all of it at this point, so.
All right.
But, you know, look for further communication in the coming week with regard to that, because I did make some calls.
Do we, do we know if the council is going to be setting up a a public hearing information meeting again?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, all right.
We will inquire.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Alrighty.
Their regular meeting. Another session meeting, so on the general conversation.
Okay, all right, yeah, there. Yeah, lots going on. Okay, anything else for us, Maureen?
I believe I have. We have anything we want to discuss?
No. Okay, I just have a couple of things that I'd like to just bring to the attention of the commission and the planner. We had a, back in the day, Valentine, Louis Valentine did a subdivision on Olinsky Boulevard, and I think, Tim, you were probably around? Were you around for Olinsky? Okay.
Yes.
At the time that the subdivision was built, which was an affordable housing subdivision, it's off of Tollgate Road. Um, the houses in the front on Tollgate Road and even within on Watch Hill were given street trees, we had Valentine plant street trees all the way through to, you know, add to the neighborhood feel and stuff. And I drove by the corner of Oliski and Tollgate Road. That corner home had five trees, they were red maples, they were not blighted, they were in good condition. And I noticed that they've all been taken down and ground up. So all the street trees are gone on that corner house. I mean, his his trees right now are in the back where his swimming pool is, but everything in front has just been leveled, and I don't know, because I think that that was part of the subdivision application and contract between the developer. And those street trees were purposely put there because there's a sidewalk there. And this is the corner of Oliski Boulevard and Tollgate Road. Um, it's, there's a corner house, but all the trees are gone, there's five trees altogether. There were two on Oliski and three in the front on Tollgate. There were two on Oliski and three in the front on Tollgate. So I just wanted to bring it to their attention because I think that that was part of the site plan approval. But I think Valentine kicked about planting those trees, but he did do that along with the boulevard. Um, the other option, the other thing I just want to quickly touch base on is the old Roby House, which is on Tollgate Road. It's a white old farm home. Um, it was sold, uh, and the, a young couple bought it. Um, it's over by the party house, you know, the Airbnb house.
I know the house. You mean, it is, it has been, um, dealt with for unsightly materials.
And. Yeah, I mean.
It is several times, um, with the new zoning officer.
Okay.
He is aware of the history of when, you know, and, and follow through with change of, of staff. So.
Yeah.
To his intention to put it back and, you know, pull it out of the pile. And that is.
Yeah.
If it's not an old thing, it's still an active thing because there were some that he had that were old that were, yeah.
Yeah.
Care of and just not.
Because he like tore down the whole porch and then it's just like piled up in the corner. I noticed he's got like a porcelain sink out there now. And, and this has been going on for years. At first I thought it was just because of COVID and it was just tough to get materials and stuff. But it's just, it, it's becoming a blighted property. I don't even know if they're there. There's a car, there's a Mercedes that's there, which really kind of freaks me out. Because I sit there and say, you, you've got this property that's disheveled, yet you've got this brand new Mercedes SUV. And it was like, I, I can't, I don't get it. Anyway, so that was that. And then of course.
A question.
Yeah.
Houses on, uh, is it on the Oliski side of the street?
Uh, the, the house, it's right on the corner. It is. It's.
They're red, they were red maples?
I believe there are red maples. I mean, the other trees.
I'm trying to identify the house.
The ta, the neighbors all have trees in front of their house. So it's right on the corner. Uh, no, so not this way, come on the other side. Yeah, 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 yeah. See where those nice little red trees are right here? They are all gone, gone, gone. I don't know what they are, but thank you. But they're all, they're all gone.
Tell us what they are.
I think they're thunderclap bong.
Thank you.
Is a long toll gate? What about these trees here?
Um, I, you know, I think he left those there. But see, what he did was he put a pool there. And then he put all this massive landscaping in the back now. And, but the trees that are from the, from the driveway, that tree's gone. That tree's gone in the corner, plus the other three. There's, well, there were three in front. So they're all gone. So it's just, it's, but the neighbors all have their nice, healthy trees. Yeah, see, they were just bang, bang, bang. He just took them all, took them all down.
I'd like to comment on this without, this subdivision. The trees were part of the subdivision approvals. Uh, and they're in the maps, uh, uh, on the maps and, uh, uh. Parted approval. So they are, should be there. Uh.
I think they need to put them back.
The other thing, this is affordable development. There's affordable properties on this pro, uh, development. And I personally, because of. Our inventory for affordable homes, I personally looked up a couple of affordable deeds. Uh, and there is no age time for expiration. Of affordability units on that property. Okay? That's what the, I was told that there was a thirty, forty year, whatever. Exploration of the affordable units and they don't count.
Yeah.
Okay, I looked up on the property owners' deeds. I saw, saw their restriction on the deeds. Okay, the same thing as Valentine's other department, uh, uh, development off of, uh. Sprucebrook. Okay.
The Fox Mill or Fox Hill or.
Right. And one of those homes just sold for six hundred something thousand dollars. Which I'm under the information, I haven't looked up that deed. But that was one of the affordable homes in that development. And six hundred something thousand dollars surely is not affordable home, you know, so there was a windfall.
Yeah.
The homeowner. Okay, uh, so I'm, I'd like to see if we can. Investigate these developments that we have in place that were affordable homes, development. And why they're not on our inventory and why there is, if there is a, a year. Put on that, that, that it's only got to be affordable for a certain amount of years. Uh, why that was put on there, if there is. Uh, the ones that I know of didn't, I didn't see those, uh, restrictions. So, uh, you know, i- if they apply to the, to the affordable housing, which we're going to be dress, addressing. At our next P O C D, uh, the thing, you know, uh, it makes, makes a difference.
Well, yeah, it really does because honestly, when we approved those, we never thought that the affordability would ever expire. But anyway, Maureen, I'm sorry.
So without me having been the one that did the research, I do know that a few years ago, um, when we had an assistant in the. Temporary planner in our office, he and Mark Kazakowski worked and created the, a list. And, you know, we have, I was actually trying to find it quickly, but I can't, um, we have so many documents filed.
That's okay.
Um, under pressure. Um, but we do have, uh, which developments. Were approved by, with the affordable component, what unit they are in the development, that's all on the land records, which.
Yes.
And you, and then most of the developments, it's only one or two units, three units in the entire development. That has to meet that affordability and which ones expire and/or the language that was used at the time. On their deed restrictions, some of them are not needing the language requirement for the eight thirty G. And therefore they aren't counted as an affordable housing unit by, according to the statutory def, um, definition of it. So they can't count, but they are still bound by affordability as long as they didn't expire. And there, there was a lesser expiration, the statute over time, from the time it was instituted. I'm going to jump in and Jennifer probably knows the year, but it was in the eighties, I believe, late eighties. Mid to late eighties that we got the affordable definition for that came out. Um, and it had a certain number of years. That number of years is extended. It's currently at forty, correct? Forty for the statutory requirement. And some, so some of the units have aged out. We definitely, in our department, as well as for the, um, affordable, I mean, the. Yeah, the Affordable Housing Plan, we've, and the P O C D, we've gone through those documents. We have listed with the years and the amounts, our social services, well, you've, you've bred. So when we've gotten, um, items where we've included affordable units, they have to have an affordability plan. And who the manager is of that. For most of the subdivisions, it's our, it's the town that does it. And our, so our social services director who actually retired two weeks ago. But there is a replacement and she's been with the staff a very long time. Um, is, you know, we, we've got to work on who's managing it. But they come to my office when one of the units that is deeded as affordable. They, um, they go through the applications, they're, they are diligent, they are monitoring who purchases those. Um, properties. We just had, oh, this week you had another one because we've had, there was about a month or two ago. Um, because they'd like for the, moving forward for the town not to be the entity responsible. And we've made it that way for most of the multifamilies that have included affordable since I've been managing. And I think even, uh, probably up to a decade ago. You know, we've had entities listed as the affordability manager as opposed to town staff. It's, it's cumbersome to go through housing applications.
I, I just, I really just wanted to, you know, bring that to the forefront there.
Well, you found it. It's probably what I'm looking at. I just can't look at it.
And then the last note that I have is the party house on Orchard Road. Uh, as we're going into summer, one of the neighbors alerted me that seems to be different couples living in that house. They seem to be flowing in and flowing out.
There's one car that stays there all the time and then all the other ones are different. You never see, you never see the.
Somebody said that it is an Airbnb, but I don't know. I. Yeah.
You know what concerns me about that is sex trafficking. It could be anything going on in there.
Yeah.
They can have a meth lab going on.
Well, we're, we're coming up on the spring and summers. One of the neighbors that's in the neighborhoods said that they saw it listed on Airbnb again. As a rental for, you know, social events and stuff. And, and I'm thinking, oh boy, but I don't, I don't know. I didn't check Airbnb. I just, they just said, well, we saw it listed. Supposedly it was listed for sale and then it was taken down and. But the blinds are always closed. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but I never see anyone really living there. So, but I just bring to your attention.
Vehicles, there's one main one, but there's different vehicles. Yeah, that concerns me.
And there always seems to be like a lot of trash in the trash cans. I mean, it's always overflowing. I'm like, what the, what the hell's going on in there?
I don't know.
But anyway, okay.
That, you want to get growers to know the BMF lab.
What?
Chamberlain Highway.
Oh, is that what that was? Oh, Jesus. Okay, all right.
Um, the property for Sunny Borders. I asked the deputy to put on the blacklist. Has someone purchased that?
It's, um, as far as I know, it was under contract before I went on vacation. An application has gone to Wetlands for some fill, but I believe that's all under Minister Bennett's name. I don't think it had the, uh, uh, actual purchaser. We can look it up quick to see a bit.
Yeah.
Transfer. But they, yeah, and they, um.
All right, anyway, anyone else have more?